Freedoms that we have, thank you for this ability we have to meet here tonight, to consider the city's business. Please be with all of us and give us wisdom and discernment. This is our prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stay standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kisha, if you will call the room, please.
Flip Brown.
Here.
Alicia Head.
Present.
Jerry Kirkman.
Here.
David Lee.
Here.
Brian Smalling.
Here.
Chandler Wilkerson.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all are present and we have a forum, so we can proceed with the meeting. The next item is to adopt the agenda. I have one change that I would like to make, and that is to move up on new business, the IDB appointment, just to let these folks get out here.
Let the motion adopt the agenda as presented with the moving of the IDB board to top the list.
A second. I have a motion by Councilman Lee for a second. Fine. Councilman Brown, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is public comments. Ms. Frida Carter wants to speak to the financial statement.
My name is Frida Carter. I live 2117, Ohio Highway 31E. As you all know, you were notified by the comptroller's office last year of the funds that the city was going to receive from the state's one-time fund for COVID relief. And that amount was eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty. There were five items in the requirement that this could be used for. And at the time, if the council voted on to use the eighty-three four twenty for paving, okay, that was applied to the 2021 budget under the general fund under other funds for eighty-three four twenty. Also, in that same budget year, we budgeted a hundred and eighteen thousand six ninety-five to the street fund, which would take care, the hundred and eighteen thousand plus the eighty-three from the state, would take care of the bid that was awarded to Rogers Group for two hundred and two thousand oh ninety-five. That was for Sumner Drive and oh thirty-one eighty. Well, after the paving loan, I mean, after the paving was done, I was told that Rogers Group came back and said that they overstated their quote, their bid, on the paving. So the invoice that was invoiced to the city was a hundred and sixty-five thousand nine sixty-two eighty-seven, leaving a total of sixty-three thousand one hundred fifty-two thirteen, not used from the budget. And we all know that the comptroller says that that has to be used for whatever it was voted on. So when the invoice was paid in June, and I'm addressing year-end process at the time, a hundred and eighteen thousand six ninety-five that was budgeted in the street fund was applied for that invoice. And then with it being decreased from the original bid, only forty-seven thousand two sixty-seven eighty-seven was paid out of the eighty-three thousand four twenty that we got from the state. So I just wanted the public to know that we've got the thirty-six thousand one fifty-two left over in the 2021 budget that has to be used for paving. And the way the financial statement is set up right now, if you don't do an accrual journal entry for year-end, which I think Tisha has done some this year, that's the general accounting for year-end process, to show that expense for thirty-six thousand one fifty-two, that is enough that will pay some additional small streets, short streets. I don't know exactly the street or the amount, but that's something you all can work out. But I just want the public to know that that money has to be used for the paving. I don't think the comptroller's office will approve our audit if that is not used, like it was set aside to use the one-time fund COVID relief. So with the financial statement as presented tonight, you're showing a thirty-six thousand one fifty-two balance left in that one-time money that wasn't used, as it should have been. And Tisha's aware of the process, and Jerry, you've been through the classes as well at the CMFO, how the year-end accrual works. So I am asking the council to consider that when you adopt the financial statement, because that money is there to use for paving. Thank you.
Okay, if you would just kind of hold up for just a moment. There's no one else to speak on public comments, and our next item on the agenda. Well, I'm sorry, we got minutes before the financial statement. Is it okay if I go ahead and address the financial statement?
Yes, sir.
If you'll turn your attention to page number five, you can look at the front summary page also, or page number five also, the under the state's street aid fund. It's showing we had an income, a budgeted income of one hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars. And it shows that we spent one hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and fourteen cents, basically putting us forty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty, forty-four in the hole. So I'm guessing that some of these journal entries and also the any extra funds that we have can either be addressed by journal entry or to have to be addressed by a, where we go back in and redo an amendment. What are your suggestions, both of your CMFOs, and what do you think?
Well, if you're short in the state's street fund, you would have to do a budget amendment to account for that. But I'm only addressing the leftover money from the state that has to be used for paving.
And you said thirty-six thousand dollars?
Thirty-six one fifty-two. That's in the general fund, not the state's street. If you'll look on your revenues, in the general fund, on the very first page, we had a one-time amount received under the revenues in July for the eighty-three four twenty. And the expense of line item to offset that is in other funds under line item nine eighty-nine, state one-time money, eighty-three thousand four twenty. In your year-to-date balance, you've got thirty-six thousand one fifty-two left over, as I stated before. And next is supposed to be used for paving, and in fact, that would pave some other areas in Westmore. It's bad as all of our streets need it.
And it's not on the agenda, but you brought it up. I wanted to address it. The comptroller issued a new debt policy effective June the fifteenth, 2021. And they have actually taken our minimum from our, what most people call our rainy day fund, from twenty-five percent of our operating budget, down now, I understand, to sixteen percent of our operating budget. So the way that I'm looking at that, that gives at least another hundred thousand dollars to put with that to do more paving.
That's your position. I'm just addressing the year-end process for June.
Yep, so I just thought that you'd be interested to know if there's more money to be used for paving.
That's a big one.
Thank you.
Finish with me? But what I was trying to hit across, before you approved this budget, I mean, this June financial report, which is the year-end, because once she closes year-end out, you can't go back and capture that money and use it for what it's supposed to be used for. It's just in the bank account as cash, and you know the comptroller don't want you just to use it as cash. It's not that we didn't lose that money, or we didn't put it to where it's supposed to go.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Okay. Next up is the minutes from the June seventeen twenty-one meeting. The motion that we adopt the minutes from the June seventeen twenty-one meeting?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to accept the minutes from the June seventeen meeting as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the minutes from the June twenty-fourth twenty-one special call meeting.
I second, Mayor.
Motion by Councilwoman Smalling, a second by Councilwoman Henn to approve the minutes of the six twenty-four twenty-one special call meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move into the nuts and bolts of the June twenty-one financial statement.
If I will make a motion to accept the June financial statement with adding that accrual count that Ms. Carter was talking about and capturing that thirty-six thousand dollars that we can use for paving.
Councilman Lee makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Brown makes the second. Ms. Kisha, how would you like to speak to some of this? Because we had the COVID money, and there's lots of things in it that might have been confusing. I guess I'm wondering why the eighty-three thousand wasn't pulled out right off the bat to pay for the paving. Of course, we expected the paving to be a lot more, so we come out really good to it. It was projected to be two hundred and two thousand, plus there was an additional, I was thinking it was six thousand for Henry Harris Road, where it collapsed, and we got by with the one hundred and sixty-plus thousand. So I'm very happy that we have that money to put back. I just want to make sure everything else was covered under it. You know, with the COVID money and that one-time state money, should have gone for paving to start with, and COVID went on for something else?
None of the actual COVID money was used for paving.
Okay.
We just expensed it all out of what was budgeted, and then what we lacked, we took back from the eighty-three thousand.
You do need journal entry to make this happen, that they are speaking of, and Mr. Poole worked with that to put in our audit with the comptroller. So is there any other discussion?
Is that the only amendment we have to make to the budget? I mean, why are we approving this one, and not with this other surprise?
That forty-three thousand, bottom, may show in us in the hole.
Is that the only one?
This is totally different than a budget amendment, Mike.
Oh, yes. When Mr. Poole does an audit, we'll have to come back. No matter how much you try to get everything right, we're just trying to get a clean audit this year. You know, Westmoreland, I don't think Westmoreland's ever had a clean audit with no findings. I don't know if we've had one in forever, there may have been one in the past, but in recent history, we have always had the two findings.
At the end of the year, the money Ms. Carter's speaking of, are we going to be able to get a, someone to do, a, a, to come and tape that?
Well, you take that along with the, you know, money that I was just speaking of. We've had two engineering reports, none in the last few years to tell us which streets to pave, so I recommended the work-study session, that the council come with a list of the streets that we've paved, and we'll get the bid package together. They actually have something now that is called a piggyback bid. If Portland was going to do paving, then we could piggyback off their price. We don't have to, we don't have to bid it as long as it's, whoever's doing their paving is in the bidding. So that might be worth looking at, save some money. But we've got a very good price on this last paving. And it's my understanding, and Aaron is here, he can speak to it, that the guy has told him that there's less paving going on this year than it has in recent years. And if you want something paved, this is your due. So if you bring it up at work-study, you want to get it moving, get the engineer getting a bid package together, and us keep going on it. The financial statement year-end actually looked pretty good in comparison of water, sewer, came out decent, sanitation come out, to my surprise, to the good, and the general fund did also, so.
Well, just accrual kept good, Brian. I'd like to keep that money. So I can, if we're reconciling, can you sort me the regular?
It just shows that expense, expenditure for the month of June in this, in the 2021 budget year, where it was budgeted already. And the funds that Jerry is speaking, Mr. Mayor's speaking of, is in this coming, the current budget you're working on now, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that would have to be addressed separately. You already have the thirty-six thousand clear expense in June of this year, work on.
Now, am I correct now that all of the funds that we've been saving for the last six years to put toward paving has now been expended? Because we were putting it back in, in funds.
That's one sixteen, one hundred and sixteen thousand out of state streets.
So all the streets that we owe on now that haven't been paved, COVID Town Road, little bit Austin Bay, and City Park Road. Ms. Kisha, any further comments before we vote?
I want to run another question.
I'll call for the question. Call the call.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Moving now to old business and charter ratification. Everyone has received the charter, had time to read, roll read. I'll accept the motion. Motion by Councilman Smalling, do I hear a second?
I second it, Mayor.
Seconds by Councilwoman Henn. We're open for discussion.
I have a question for Ms. Bradley. Mr. Bradley, at the work-study, we talked about, we're ratifying this tonight because the state sent it back to us to approve their approval, correct?
That's correct. You have to pass about two-thirds of the vote.
Which was the, I mean, we did pass it by two-thirds of the vote the last time. It didn't get ratified, I don't know what the term is. When we ratify this tonight, when is the official date that it starts?
Takes effect when the Secretary of State's office receives the notice that you've ratified it.
Okay.
Which I've talked to the mayor, we anticipate that being within the next couple of days. And we've done several since the one that wasn't ratified, so this is to clean everything up, basically.
I just wanted to clarify the date that it will be official.
Another discussion? Mr. Bradley was saying this takes four votes to pass, the legislature likes for it to be unanimous, so there's no questions? Ms. Kisha, if you call the room, please.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hen?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Strout, when you get called up there, if you can bring those documents up front, please. Second or a minute to record all this now, don't worry. We will fix the sale on those days, and return the money that goes to the Secretary of State to you, please.
Do you know which color one that was?
John, it's the white one that goes to Secretary of State, you don't want to stay as a copy here.
Doesn't matter.
Assuming both of them actually copy, we'll make sure to get the right ones. Twice as good a shot if you send them both.
I have asked Mr. Bradley to make sure that these arrive at the Secretary of State's office. If he hand delivers them, or if he sends them a certified mail, whatever, the city will cover the cost. This is where it got lost the last time. Mr. Bradley has hours and hours of work written in writing these documents, so, Mr. Bradley, I appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance zero-three-two-zero-two-one-dash-one to weather policy from the city of Westmore.
I can motion approve that weather policy.
I have a motion by Councilman Smalling, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Brown. We are open for discussion. Mr. Bradley had opportunity to look at this, and he approved it as well.
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Kisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Hen?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Moving now to new business. The industrial development board has asked for an appointment of Stephen Bell for to fill out the term of Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt passed away, and we really hated to see him go. He was dearly beloved of his city and worked really hard. Anyone from the industrial board want to speak to him? Okay. I highly recommend Stephen. I've known him for several years. He's a great guy, and he will do the city well on that. So I will look for motion to accept him being to this position.
I also want to make motion, Mr. Bradley.
I second.
Mr. Lee makes the motion. Ms. Wilkerson makes the second. Do we have, do we have it nailed down what the term will be then, this year or next year?
It's, Bill, Bill Hunt's term would expire the end of this year. So that's what we're asking for Steve to step in, and then we'll go from there.
Stephen looks forward to seeing you back end of this year. Thank you again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next item under new business is to hire Parktown's police officers, Chief Jolly. Do you want to combine all four of these officers together, or do you want to separate them?
I think we put them all together, I don't need you.
Yeah, I want to.
I understood, we're on motion. Is there any discussion? So I'd go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion to hire these two jobs. Parktown?
I second it, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second. Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, the second by Councilwoman Henn, to hire part-time police officers. Go ahead, Chief, if you want to speak.
I have one man here, if you would not stepping up here, Mr. Price. Former individual, one is, lives right now in East Tennessee, was able to make it, left to work, another job, so Mr. Price wasn't able to be here. As discussed before in work session, you all are aware, we've got a, well, we have a person on administrative leave, we don't know how long that's going to be, so we can't fill that spot, which leaves us a little bit shorthanded with the full-time persons. One of our part-time persons has been injured and he's going to be out for at least a month. And then we have another part-time officer that's just right now not going to be able to put in the hours that we're hoping to be able to put in, so we're short on both part-time and obviously one for full-time, so I'd just like to make a motion to help us have tremendously on our schedule and also help out on overtime to be able to have these four part-time officers, of course.
And I make for recommendation to the council for all four of these I've sat in on some interviews, not all of them, and I think that, and obviously a couple of the officers have worked in the city before, really they have pretty good reputations, so I think they do a great job, of course.
I was just a little curious, I knew that during the work study you mentioned that we needed one part-time at the time to see forward, that I was kind of taken aback. Would it be, is this because you were able to just balance the workload as vacations and things like that?
Yes. One of the individuals, Mr. Jack White, he's going to just work one day shift, he's going to work, he's committed one day a week, which most likely be Saturday. He works two days a week with Southern County Sheriff's Office, he lives just a mile outside of town. He had approached me not long after I started working here, saying he was, that part-time because he lives close by, but he's 72, he's been along for forever, in wonderful shape and all that, so because of his pensions, he can only commit to one day per week. Mr. Tyson and Mr. Colbertson, they understand what we need right now, anything, is we're going to need officers that are going to work the midnight shift and they consent that we want to do that. And Mr. Beau Carter, he can commit to at least one night per week and maybe two, but he works nights for the Sheriff's Department, so it's going to depend on, and he's got rotating off days, so it's going to depend on how his, but, so he may work one night shift one week and might be able to work two the next, so it will help us tremendously.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Are all of these officers certified?
No, Mr. Tyson is certified, Mr. Colbertson is certified, Mr. White does not work enough hours to be certified. He's eligible to be certified if he went to full-time, but as he's going to stay part-time, he will not be certified, and then Mr. Carter is certified.
Just make it over payroll.
Right, exactly.
I'll send you that one, it's good.
Mr. Carter's finished with everything he needs to complete, Mr. Tyson and Mr. Colbertson have their psychological evaluations scheduled for the 20th, and Mr. White's not able to make that day, so he's going to go in 22nd. So I think we give Mr. Carter who schedules early next week, and hopefully that'll be three within the next two weeks.
Definitely trying to get you some early.
Yes, sir.
As most of you know, she's been bowling some of his extra share, so we thank him for that.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Ms. Keisha, if you'll call, roll please.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Next item is the health officer and building code's employee job description. We want to get this fast and get it ready to go, I think Ms. Keisha has a job classified ad that is ready to run and maybe put it on Indeed and some other areas. The only thing that we haven't wrapped up, and it might be that we need to discuss that in work study because we won't have this all ironed out before then, will be how much we're going to pay this individual. This will be a full-time position and I think we will have several to apply. What we ran into last time when we advertised it as a part-time position, most everyone had a conflict because it was the people that got a lot of contracting in the city and it was a conflict of interest for them to, not words they couldn't express, they're on the road, it wasn't appropriate. So I agree with motion, we'll discuss this job description.
Make the motion to approve the job description, building code.
I second. Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, second by Councilman Brown, we're open for discussion.
The folded pieces, just the other pieces that were added or changed, but I combined the two.
Thank you for putting together what was. Added that ocean compliance and safety manual responsibility quite nicely there at the end.
I think it covers everything that we talked about.
So next step is for us to discuss the salary and then we'll be able to start posting, is that right?
We can go ahead and get it into paper, but generate, first question people are going to ask is how much does a job pay? With it being, in the past it was a salary position, we're going to make it an hourly position, so, and it does report to the chief of police, so. I'm actually ready to go ahead and advertise it, and what I'll do is myself, chief, maybe one of the persons will go through the applications and we'll bring the top priority handed to the, to the city council or council like the state.
I will call for questions.
You'll call, roll please.
Brown.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the consent order and contract with the engineers. The council authorizes the mayor to go ahead and sign contracts, but with this contract being the amount that it is, I want council input and approval on it, and also as we get deeper into it, as we're working with the consent order, the council will have to appropriate for a budget amendment, some funds to pay corporate services. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move forward with the consent order with the engineers.
I second the motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Smalling, we're open for discussion. If anyone doesn't have their copy up, if I have that, welcome to, the week is over. Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha, if you'll call, roll please.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Keisha, if you will take this, and I don't know if they'll need an original or if they'll want it scanned to be engineering firm tomorrow. Next item is Resolution R 0272021-1, the safety partners grant.
Make motion, pass resolution, R 072021-1, safety grant.
Mr. Leaf makes the motion, do we hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Wolferson makes the second, this is a grant that has been applied for for many years during the safety partners. 1,500, that's just what we had last year, so it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to get free money in to help us with some of our safety needs. Is there other discussion?
Keisha. It's a grammar thing, yeah. That was bold thing.
If you will call, roll please.
Brown.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Resolution R 072021-2, the Title VI compliance manual. I hear a motion, give us starting.
I make a motion, we hear for Resolution R 072021-2, Title VI compliance manual.
I second the motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Smalling, to accept Resolution R 072021-2. Ms. Keisha, do you have anything you'd like to say to the council about it? We discussed it at the work study meeting, this is a requirement for us to have, I think we actually had some paperwork possibly in.
We did have this, but I could not find where it was ever adopted, and part of the paperwork that we have just submitted to SRF requires us to put the date it was adopted, so.
And when you vote on this, then it will move on to the next policy just a little bit, so, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call, roll on this resolution.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Next item is Resolution R 072021-3, the LEP policy.
Make the motion approve, R 072021-3.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, do we hear a second?
I second it, Mayor.
Councilwoman Henn makes the second, we're open for discussion.
Just to clarify, the this one and the previous one, are there all the procedures in place and documents that are, that are part of this compliance, that you just could not find?
Not, not the LEP policy, that apparently is never been said.
If you need a minute to read through that, we just received this policy tonight, so we haven't had a couple of weeks to study it, feel free to do that.
It's basically just like the one that I handed out at work study, that was TNEC, I think, coffee there.
Do you have a interpretation system set up?
Not yet, there's the two companies that they listed, I'm just going to reach out to both of them and get accounts set up.
Because that would be a client, so we have to use it.
Correct.
Being a client.
We have to eat logs, so when we contact them and what it's for, like.
Yeah, how will both the laws work, I'll just say, a police officer now, how will they get you that information pretty well?
Each department has to keep a log, so if an officer has to call the number, then they'll just have to let the chief or the senior or whoever's keeping the log at the police department show, and then, I'm not sure if it's something like yearly, kind of like the ocean logs or what, I mean, if they want yearly, if I consider logs, I mean, I should all of them work.
And both of those two companies are under state contract, so it's something that we all have to be. Call for questions?
Lee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. That is everything, it's on the agenda tonight, we'll thank everyone for coming, we appreciate your attendance. First Thursday, office will be our regular work study meeting, that is when we allow the public to be calling, it's an open meeting, so if you have things that you want to discuss that is not on the agenda or anything, that is your opportunity to speak to the council in open session. Thank you, I hear a motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.